Like, you know, playing about that. Yeah. Boy, 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 harder than... Um, my next step is to try to use the... Um, so I need to... Help me with that. Yeah, but this is... Yeah. 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 It is, it is helping. That's why I want to... Yeah. Yeah. On the same thing, help me. Yeah. 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 Has to be 10. How many? 10.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers. And welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, August 12th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:15 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special introductions and presentations scheduled. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Perry. Okay. Or Councilman Parks. Is Mr. Parks ready?
Come on. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to have one of our local legends here today to honor. I'd like to ask Mr. Ross Porter to come up.
Gentlemen.
Many of you recognize...
Muchas de ustedes se reconocen...
Ed Reyes. Come on up. Many of you recognize Mr. Porter as a Los Angeles Dodger radio and television broadcaster since 1977. He provided 28 years of loyal service. In fact, many of us remember that he set a record in the city of Los Angeles for Major League baseball in that he broadcast continually a 22-inning game that took over six hours between the Dodgers and the Expos in August of '89. He earned the Tom Harmon Special Achievement Award from the Southern California Broadcasters Association. He moved to Los Angeles from Oklahoma in '66 and joined Channel 4, where he worked from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 noon cast until '76. He announced NFL games on NBC between 1970 and '76. He also broadcast college basketball, games on television and radio for 25 years, including 19 seasons with the University of Nevada Las Vegas. And he was the broadcaster during the 1990 season in which they won the NCAA championship. He also broadcast the Dodger World Series games in '81 and '86 when they won titles both years. He's the only broadcaster in history to broadcast both World Series winner and a national collegiate basketball championship. He's won an L.A. area Emmy Award for Sport Casting Excellence in 1972, then won his second Emmy for announcing Dodger games in 2002. Ross Porter was inducted into the Southern California Sports Broadcast Hall of Fame on January 2005 after 38 uninterrupted years announcing in Los Angeles. He's been married to his wife Lynn for 44 years, and they're the parents of two sets of twins and the grandparents of 13. The council resolved today in honoring him for his longtime dedicated and professional service in broadcasting. His face is known throughout the world, and he is a Los Angeles treasure. Let me ask Ed Reyes to come up and make some comments.
Thank you, Congressman Parks. And he is known for...
Kind of gives me goosebumps to see the great history we have here in Los Angeles. We have Mr. O'Malley, who is here with us. Mr. Jaime Haring. And to hear the voice of Ross Porter. Let's give a round of applause, folks.
La voz de Ross Porter. Vamos a darle un aplauso.
You talk about the historic fabric of this great city, and can't help but think of those summer nights, listening to baseball and hearing Ross Porter's voice over the air. And to hear that voice come out of the kaleidoscope of stars that this great city has to offer. And so I want to thank Congressman Parks for bringing Mr. Ross Porter to the chamber. And to share a moment with us of history of all the greatness that the Dodgers represent. And Mr. Porter for delivering those great play-by-play scenes. And to actually be at a place and time where we can acknowledge another great treasure in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you, Congressman Parks. Thank you, Mr. Porter, Mr. O'Malley, Mr. Haring. For all the joy and all the happiness you brought, thousands and thousands of people over the years in Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Entretienimiento y la felicidad que ha traído a miles y miles de fanáticos aquí en Los Angeles.
I'm going to ask and impose on Mr. O'Malley to come up.
Le voy a pedir al señor O'Malley que...
Longtime Dodger owner, certainly a person who's been a mainstay in this city for so many years, and certainly has a personal relationship with Mr. Porter.
Con una ciudad y tiene una gran relación personal con el señor por...
Thank you, Councilman Parks, President Padilla, Councilman Reyes. It is another happy day for me to be here. I've been in this chamber many times and look back with fond memories. But today I'm here as a friend of Ross Porter. Ross and I worked up at Dodger Stadium for about 25 years together. I was his boss, but he was no problem. He was always the delight. He always represented the ball club in the most professional manner. First class all the way, and a good part of the reason why the Dodger image is what it is today is because of the communication, the great communication that Ross did with our many fans. So congratulations, Ross. You deserve this.
Por personas como Ross Porter.
May I ask Mr. LeBonge to say a few words? Mr. LeBonge. Much, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, and Ross, Mr. O'Malley, and Jaime. Sorry I was late for the reception. We were talking about traffic upstairs, and we brought up Dodger Stadium in traffic. Mr. Smith and I on those issues. But Ross Porter, what great history to Los Angeles. I remember you and Brian Gumbel worked together at NBC4 before the Dodgers swooped you up, and you'd be covering the football games, both at UCLA when they were at the Coliseum and the then Los Angeles Rams in their great days when they were there with Chuck Knox and all of that. Congratulations for what you did and what Peter O'Malley said, and what's so interesting. I mean, your partner for all those years, Vin Scully, is... This, I don't know of anybody in Los Angeles. I know Johnny Grant in Hollywood, but Vin Scully in Los Angeles, your partner for so many years, brought people home, as you brought people home, as you announced and made people believe in the great sport of baseball. And right there on that row, right to your right, is the great city of Nogoya, their deputy mayor, who I'm going to introduce in a minute. And last night I was able to run them up to the stadium so they could see a little of the great American game, which I know the Dodgers, and I know Bernard, you're blocking Mr. O'Malley, my constituent there. But the Dodgers have been so good over the years under your leadership, Peter, to go to Japan and make it such an international game. I would throw you this ball just to play catch, but Bernard would give me a ticket. He still has one in his back pocket. Ross Porter, I salute you, and thank you for all those many years of service to the Dodgers and service to Southern California, because there's nothing like a sports announcer. I got to have a confession. My son is seven years old, and the good news is, he turned off the Cartoon Network, and he's watching ESPN, and he's learning geography of the United States, because I quizzed him on all the teams, and it's baseball that's getting him out of that. So congratulations, Ross, and for all your years of service and your lovely wife. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes. You're on a great one. Mr. Rosenthal. I'd just like to say that Walter Cronkite was the integrity and the man on that. You've been the man on the sports, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
De lo del. Usted es el representante y representa la integridad de la pelota y le agradecemos eso.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, members of the council. It's a thrill to be here today. Lynn and I have been married for 44 years.
Emoción estar aquí el día de hoy. Lynn y yo hace 44 años que estamos casados.
And she reminded me last night...
Ella me recordó anoche.
It was about 39 years ago at this time that I got a chance to come to Los Angeles.
Me dieron la oportunidad de venir aquí a Los Angeles.
And at the time, I was in Oklahoma City where I was making $12,000 a year.
Donde ganaba 12,000 dólares al año.
And they said if you'll stay, we'll boost your salary to 17,000 and give you a car.
Y me dijeron, si se queda, le damos 17,000 dólares. Y le damos un carro. Y en ese momento, me dieron la oferta de ir a Los Angeles, y Lynn dijo... Está seguro que quiere decir porque...
I said yes.
Está seguro que quiere decir que quieres hacer esto porque solamente te aseguran 15,000 dólares. Yo dije que sí. Es una gran oportunidad para mí y para mi profesión porque simplemente porque Los Angeles en ese momento lo conocían como la capital deportiva de los Estados del mundo. Y cuando llegamos aquí, me enteré que verdaderamente eso era exactamente verdad. Estoy muy orgulloso de haber pasado todo este tiempo, por 38 años interrumpido, hablando a todos los fanáticos de la pelota y los oyentes de Los Angeles. Y agradada mucho haber vivido en esta ciudad.
For this honor, I want to thank Peter for coming.
Estoy muy agradecido el día de hoy. Quiero darle gracias a todas las personas que vinieron.
Jenny Porter is here today with four of our 13 grandchildren.
Que está aquí con cuatro de nuestros nietos, de nuestros 13 nietos.
Our friend Cheryl Bilton is here, as well as Patty Patano, Brent Shire has come over with Peter. We have a lot of good friends on hand this morning. And again, thanks to all of you who have made the day possible for us. We appreciate it very much.
Así que quisiera dar las gracias a todas las personas que hicieron este día posible para nosotros. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes.
Gracias, señor Parks.
Mr. Cook, would you please call the roll? Cartez Garcetti, Grill, Han LeBonge, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Vice-Side Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum.
Los 10 miembros present.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Colleagues, before calling upon the next presentation, let's go through the agenda and discuss the consent items. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approve all the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Park seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves. And Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue Item 3 to next Friday, August 19th.
And the objection, colleagues, to continuing Item Number 3.
A pasar el número 3 hasta la próxima semana.
Items 1 through 10, with the exception of 3, are items which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee has submitted its report on Item 1. And the Housing Committee has submitted its report on Item Number 4, and those both have been circulated to all members. And there is an amending motion on Item Number 8.
Okay. Members, Item Number 1 through 10 now before us, public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials, Mr. Parks?
Yes, we have a special on 4 and 8.
Tenemos especial en el 4 y el 8. Tenemos que añadir algo.
Let's call 4 special, and 8 special by Mr. Parks as well.
El 4 y el 8, señor Smith.
10 calls special by Mr. Smith.
El número 10, que lo pedió especial, señor Smith.
4, 8, and 10 calls special. Item 3 has been continued on the balance of the items. Please open the roll.
El número 3 ha sido pasado. Abre, abre el voto, cierra el voto, y tabula.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held, and votes are required for consideration.
Numbers 11 through 27 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed.
Las audiencias públicas no ha habido nadie que ha pedido una audiencia pública con respecto a estos artículos. 26.
Any other specials?
Las audiencias públicas había cerrada. La señora Grill ha pedido el 26 como especial. Tabulamos el voto.
11 eyes.
Those items are approved. Let's also call Item 28 special.
And... Nombrar el 28 especial.
Forthwith on Item Number 12.
Y vamos a...
And return to presentations.
Dirigido directamente, vamos a regresar a las presentaciones.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the members of the 1963 Fremont High School baseball team to join me in the middle aisle. And as they come up, I want to introduce Ross Sapp, Ernest Kirkwood, Paul Jefferson, Curtis White, Bob Watson, Al Saldana, Richard Pruitt, Ron Mingo, Andy Matoyer, Herb Williams, Willie Crawford, Phil Potte, Charles Porter, Carl Moore, Ben Finisterre, Wyn Gibson, and Bob Tolan. Come on close, come on up here close. You stand next to me. And then I'd also like to ask the 2005 Coliseum League varsity title recipients of Fremont High School to join us on either side of the podium. That is...
Del 2005, para que se pongan aquí al lado derecho.
Leo Betterman.
Del estrado. Leo Betterman.
Frankie Jones, Henry Quinones, Jesús Magallanes, Geraldo Sandoval, Fidel Manira, Daniel Garcia, Antonio Reyes, Salvador Camacho, Cecil Ferguson, Alfonso Toro, Antonio Perez, Christopher... Antonio Reyes, Salvador Camacho, Cecil Ferguson, Alfonso Toro, Antonio Perez, Christopher Tompkins, and their head coach, Curtis Thompson. Let's give them a round of applause now.
Vamos a darle un aplauso ahora.
We should all be very proud of Fremont High School. This high school has produced three Hall of Famers, more than any other high school in the United States. Willie Crawford, Bob Tolan, Bob Watson. It is very, it is a very special honor to have these special guests here today. We have two impressive homegrown baseball teams from our own Fremont High School right here in the ninth council district. The two thousand five Fremont High School Coliseum League varsity championship winners, and they've won this Coliseum League varsity title for five consecutive years. We also have their... Clap again. All right, clap again. Why not?
Sí, sí, sí. ¿Cómo no? Aplaudan otra vez. ¿Por qué no?
But let me tell you, they had some great role models. The Fremont High School class of nineteen sixty-three baseball team who won the baseball city championship title over forty years. This is an impressive group of men who have set the pace for future generations, as evidenced by our two thousand five team. They have inspired our community with their talent, dedication, and team. In fact, last night, our own Dodgers honored the nineteen sixty-three team at their game. And I wanted to take the opportunity to honor both of these teams and let the rest of the city experience what this means for our community, because they truly are an inspiration. Now, let's give them a hand.
Vamos a dar por la inspiración y el apoyo que siempre han brindado a la comunidad. Vamos a darle un aplauso.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, and guests. My name is Ron Typerider Mingo, and it feels my teammates asked me to share with you our coach in a different light. And I would like to do that by reciting a poem called "Bridge Builder" by William Drangul. But first, I would like you to understand that Mr. Pope was more than a coach who led us to a city championship in nineteen sixty-three. He was a great educator. And the word "education" is, if you reach just one child, you've done your job. But you can see, he's reached many. Children don't care how much you know. They want to know how much you care, and he cared a lot. The best way to keep something of knowledge, that is, is to give it away. And he gave away a lot. I can remember a conversation I had with Mr. Pope in nineteen sixty-three during our championship run. He asked me, "Mingo, if you had the opportunity to work with students who did not give you any problems and did everything that you said," or "Would you work with students who gave you problems?" It took me all of one second to answer him. I said, "I would rather work with students who did not give me problems and did everything that I said." But he said, "No, you want to work with students who give you problems." After five years of playing professional baseball, I too became an educator. And I've taught thirty-two years in the San Francisco and Oakland School Districts. Now, the poem...
Pero él me dijo, no. Lo que quiere usted hacer es trabajar con estudiantes que le den problemas.
An old man traveled a lonely highway. He came at evening cold and gray to a chasm vast, deep, and wide that he must cross to the other side. The old man crossed in the twilight dim, for that sullen stream held no fears for him. But he turned as he reached the other side and began building a bridge to span the tide. Old man, still a pilgrim standing near, you wasting your time building here. Your journey will end at the close of the day, and never again will you pass this way. You've crossed a chasm vast, deep, and wide. Why build a bridge at evening tide? The old man lifted his proud, gray head. "The path I've come," he said, "there follows me a youth someday. This chasm that has meant nothing to me to these youth a pitfall might be. They too must cross in the twilight dim. Good friend, I'm building this bridge for them." And ironic as it might seem, I, if working in the Oakland School District, a principal did something unprecedented. He rented a church in the neighborhood far from the school, and he gave me fifteen of the most fickle students in the school. But needless to say, all of them graduated. Mr. Pope, I love you. We love you. You have been among many the light at the end of my tunnel, and we all will take our love for you to our graves. Thank you very much.
Lo queremos mucho. Ha sido la luz al final de mi tula.
And thank you for being such incredible role models and setting, setting a standard and reaching back and touching the lives of young men like the young men you see here before you today. And it's just proof that taking an interest in the lives of those who are coming up behind you and acting as a parent, a mother, a father, a family member, regardless of whether you're related biologically, can transform a community. So thank you for the nineteen sixty-three graduates, and congratulations to our two thousand five award-winning team, Fremont High School.
And before you leave, before you leave, Mr. LeBonge wants to add a few words.
Gracias por todo lo que ha dicho. El señor LeBonge quiere añadir algo?
And salute one of your teammates, the late, great Willie Crawford. Give him a big hand and his memory.
Dale un buen aplauso.
I was selling newspapers on Hyperion Avenue when the headline came out, Dodgers Signed Bonus Baby, and it was Willie Crawford. And although my favorite Dodger was a rough rider from Roseville, Willie Davis, Willie Crawford, and the history, and he could have gone to USC and been a, been a, a great football player as well. What a, what a history and all that. Coach Pope, uh, got that? And holler for me there. What you saying there? Good to see you all down here, high and low to all of Fremont. Plan to stand where they're standing in about forty years. Good luck and hard work to the pathfinders of Fremont. Congratulations.
Pararse donde separan ellos hoy, en cuarenta y tres años. Señor Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just too wanted to stand and congratulate Fremont High. My dad, Kenny Han, went to Fremont High. And we were raised with your motto of pathfinders, which is, I think it's make a path or find one. What is it?
Abrir caminos.
So that, uh, that's something that was in my household the whole time. That whole time in that home was great. Because it adds more meaning to pathfinders, and it adds more meaning to, it's not just about yourself, it's about those who come after you.
Es muy bueno porque eso le da más significado, abrir caminos. Así que no es solamente para ustedes, es para todos los que vienen atrás de ustedes.
Find the path or make one.
That's what I thought. I was close.
Mr. Cardenas.
Encuentren camino o ábranlo.
Thank you very much, uh, Council President. I just wanted to congratulate all of you for being champions, and especially for the older men of the group for being champions since. You got the rings or you got the trophies back then, and to live a life of giving back to these young people and to the community. I think it's, it's real timely that I got to see this display. Thank you very much, Jan Perry. Just two nights ago, I sat down in my living room with a young man who thanked me and also Greg Smith. Because we sent a kid to Russia who's at Chatsworth High School, one of our city wrestling champions. So that he could go to a wrestling camp in Russia. And the most telling thing that he told me that what he learned there, and that's what I want to remind all of you, what he learned over there and shared with me was so compelling and it was so touching to hear a seventeen-year-old kid say this. He said, "What I learned was that it's up to me to decide if I'm gonna be a champion." It's up to me to decide if I'm gonna be a champion. And then he proceeded to tell me that he now believes that he can do anything as long as he decides that he wants to work at it. Do a good job and be that. So what I'm trying to impart with you young people today is, please understand that you can be anything you want to be. This is a great country where you can be the champion baseball player or the champion team, but you can be the champion of anything you want to be. And these people more seasoned in life will tell you that, but you gotta believe them. You gotta believe us. That you have so much ahead of you, you've proven that you can be champions in this sport. Now you have to understand, you can translate that into anything. Thank you very much, Jan Perry, for bringing them forth before us. And please believe that. You know it. Once you believe it, the sky's the limit.
Ustedes lo saben. A la vez que lo crean, no tiene límite.
I rise to say that this is the best part of the moment here today. First of all, the present and the future. Those guys there are your mentors. Stay close to them, and they give you strength. Stay close to each other, and you'll continue to grow with each other over the years ahead. The experience that you're having together now will be with you for the rest of your life. I applaud the relationship between today and tomorrow. And I applaud my colleague, Jan Perry, for bringing it to our attention. God bless you all. Thank you.
Y mañana. Y aplaudo a la concejal Perry por haberlo presentado a ustedes entre nosotros. Gracias a señora Perry por haber traído Fremont aquí al Consilio, y gracias al Consilio por un par de cosas. Primero que nada, porque ustedes han sido personas que apoyan.
We also are appreciative of your longtime effort in bringing and producing so many academic and sports heroes in the city. I grew up in a parochial school, and we used to follow Southern League, 'cause that's where the athletes, where that was the competition. That was where you have an opportunity to go out and see legends being built, either in, uh, in school and Southern League or in AA ball at our local playgrounds. And that was where our athletic stars came from. And I think it is important that those that are in school today to know just how these graduates from sixty-three broke down barriers. Mr. Watson certainly has broken down many, many barriers, not just swinging a bat, but being able to deal with a sharp pencil and a sharp mind and negotiate and be a president of a mega organization in Major League Baseball. So you can do it all. You don't have to be the guy that hits the ball four hundred feet, but you can also pay the guy that hits the ball four hundred feet. And so these are things that are important for this community, and Fremont has been the cornerstone for so many positive issues in our community. I'm just pleased to see all of you here and hope that you keep that legacy. And I want to say hello to Paul Jefferson, retired LAPD captain who has done a wonderful job, left and became chief of police in Northern California, and is back in the city of Los Angeles. Say hello to him, and thank you for all your efforts. And again, to continue looking at ways to increase the interest in baseball in the inner city so that we can continue the legacy that Mr. Watson and others have brought forth in the forefront. So thank you very much for being here.
La costumbre que nos ha dejado el señor.
Other members wishing to speak at this time? If not, congratulations, uh, on my behalf as well, both to the veterans back there for an incredible, incredible accomplishment, uh, but to the, to the young guys especially, uh, as a former baseball player myself, I understand what a tremendous goal it is to just play the game, uh, but how much more you're gonna learn about life than you are about baseball, uh, by the time you graduate from high school. So enjoy.
Before they step away from the podium, Mr. President, I wanted to also ask our following folks to stand up and just to recognize them, principal of Fremont High School, Larry Higgins.
Darle reconocimiento aquí al equipo de Fremont High School, Larry Higgins.
Bob Watson is also here, uh, from Major League Baseball Vice President. Uh, Bob, if you could rise. Okay, right behind me. Bobby Tolan, professional coach, Major League Baseball Vice President. And then the son of Willie Crawford, Willie Crawford Jr. Thank you. I have one more presentation.
Una presentación más.
Okay. You guys are in. Okay, you guys follow me. I'm gonna take pictures in the back. Okay. Absolutely. I'll see you in a minute. She's gonna get a lot of you, so it'll be, take a while to set it up. You might have to do it in stages. Okay. Yeah. All right. Mm-hmm. Hands it to the guard. You can't, okay. All right. If I can ask the delegation from Ecuador, presented by Dr. Gallo Arturo Ordúnez Garate, Congressman representing the Ecuadorian province of Canar, to join me here? As soon as I can. Let's have them come in. I'll hold this one up. Yeah, I'll just hold this one up. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Okay. Busy, 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 busy. Okay. Dr. Osvaldo Zavala.
Eh, Osvaldo Zavala es ministro, yo, Gal Ordúnez.
Is he here?
Representante del Congreso.
Okay, okay. Él es, él es aquí?
Eh, él es ministro de relaciones exteriores del Ecuador.
Sí, sí. Okay. Es aquí, a la derecha.
El primero.
Aquí?
Sí.
Doctor? Sí, Zavala? Okay. And then, uh, yes. This morning, I'd like to present the delegation from the country of Ecuador, and before we begin with the presentation, I believe that we will join them in singing the National Anthem, acapella.
Unirnos a ellos a cantar el himno nacional.
Please.
Sin música, acapella.
Salve, oh patria, mil veces, oh patria. Gloria a ti, glory to ti, glory to ti, glory to ti. Y a tu pecho, tu pecho reboza. Goza y paz, y a tu pecho reboza. Y tu frente, y tu frente radiosa. Más que el sol contemplamos lucir. Y tu frente, tu frente radiosa. Más que el sol contemplamos lucir. Los primeros, los hijos del suelo, que soberbio el pichincha de cola. Te aclamaron por siempre, señora, y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el holocausto, y esa sangre fue germen fecundo. Y otros héroes que atonita el mundo, ven tu turno a millar surgir. A millar surgir. A millar surgir. Salve, oh patria, mil veces, oh patria. Gloria a ti, glory to ti, glory to ti, glory to ti. Y a tu pecho, tu pecho reboza. Goza y paz, y a tu pecho reboza. Y tu frente, y tu frente radiosa. Más que el sol contemplamos lucir. Y tu frente, y tu frente radiosa. Más que el sol contemplamos lucir. ¡Vive el Ecuador!
Bienvenidos a la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de participar en esta celebración de su cultura. Hay muchos ecuatorianos aquí en Los Ángeles, y creo que muchos de ellos van a venir al centro de la ciudad para celebrar este día importante en la historia de su país. Gracias por todo. And I would like to say, welcome to the delegation from Ecuador today. There are many, many Ecuadorians living here in Los Angeles, and I believe that they will join us in the center of our city to celebrate an important day in the history of the country of Ecuador. Presented today, uh, presented today is Dr. Gallo Arturo Ordúnez Garate, Congressman. And if you would please rise, representing the Ecuadorian province of Canar. We are also joined by Dr. Osvaldo Molestina Zavala, Secretary of Commerce and Business Affairs of Ecuador. Doctor, I'm sorry, Honorable Gilbert Zambrano, Ecuadorian Council General, and of course, Ms.
And of course, Miss Ecuador, Miss Jimena Zamora, Senior Engineer, Paul Harasco, Prefecto del Asuay. If you would all please rise and join me here at the podium for this recognition.
Si pudieran aquí unirse a mí a la estrada, cerca de la estrada, para hacer esta presentación. Están aquí en el día de hoy para celebrar la Fiesta Patria. Fiesta Patria es el día de independencia del Ecuador, el diez de agosto, del 1809, buscó la independencia, la primera pelea para la independencia del Ecuador, sirvió en Quito, Ecuador. Esto es un día, fue un día importante en la historia del pueblo ecuatoriano y me agrada mucho que la ciudad pueda unirse para celebrar.
For those of you who didn't know, the festivities began this past Wednesday at El Pueblo and will culminate on August the fourteenth with a tremendous parade in downtown Los Angeles, starting on Broadway and ending in our own Fletcher Bowery Square at the Triforium. These festivities include art exhibitions, music, food, and dance. It is a tremendous opportunity to experience a rich culture of Ecuador. I am also honored to be a part of this celebration and will be joining the mayor as one of the grandmasters of this year's parade. And with that, I would like to welcome the entire delegation and ask them to say a few words.
Las presentaciones principales en la parada. Quise, le voy a pedir aquí al... Congressista que diga varias palabras.
Mister Alex Padilla, President of the Council of Los Angeles. Members of the Council, authorities of Ecuador. I am very pleased to be here with you and the members of the Council of the City of Los Angeles. And on behalf of my country, Ecuador, I wish to express to you the most highest recognition and gratefulness for your decision to proclaim Ecuadorian week here in the city of Los Angeles between the sixth and fourteen days of August.
Aquí en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, el seis y el catorce de agosto, el diez de agosto es uno de los días más importantes en la historia de Ecuador, porque fue el día en el 1809, que se programó como el primer día de la revolución de la América de la América Española.
Thank you again on behalf of the Ecuadorian community in the city of Los Angeles. If you may allow me, Mr. President, in honor to my people, I will continue my speech in Spanish.
Continuaré mi parlamento en...
La revolución del diez de agosto de 1809 es un ejemplo emancipador en América, que le dio a Quito el título de luz de América, el primer grito de independencia en América. Esa revolución quiteña del diez de agosto de 1809 culminó un largo proceso de confrontación social y de progresiva afirmación de nuestra conciencia e identidad nacional. La independencia de los Estados Unidos en 1776, la revolución francesa en 1889 marcaron el pensamiento de los patriotas Juan Pio Montúfar y Francisco Eugénio de Santa Cruz y Espejo, quienes inspiraron las sublevaciones que culminaron el diez de agosto de 1809 en que se programó la independencia de los territorios de Quito. Los nombres de Javier Casubi, Manuela Cailisares y Antonio Ante, Manuel Quiroga y Juan Salinas y otros, culminan un proceso insurgente proclamando la independencia de Quito, transformando de hecho la estructura política reinante, consolidando la naciente junta suprema de gobierno, cuyo presidente fue designado el patriota Juan Pio Montúfar. El diez de agosto de 1809 fue la génesis de la libertad en América, que provocó la cesión de Caracas, Bogotá, Buenos Aires y Santiago de Chile, que instituyeron juntas de gobierno similares a las de Quito. Después se produciría el sacrificio cruento, cuyo horror habría despertado la indignación de toda América, el sacrificio de los patriotas el dos de agosto de 1810. La revolución y la independencia estaban en marcha, Guayaquil el nueve de octubre de 1820, la culminación de nuestra libertad e independencia con la batalla del Pichincha el veinticuatro de mayo de 1822. Señores ecuatorianos residentes aquí en el estado de California y en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, diversas causas motivan a que los nacionales de un país cambien su domicilio a otra nación, a otra nación que los acoge con la mayor generosidad y hospitalidad. Aman a quienes los acogen con bondad y respeto y ustedes se hacen merecedores de esa confianza, contribuyendo con su trasfuerzo, con su trabajo, esfuerzo y honestidad al progreso de sus ciudad y país adoptivos. Junto ello, late el alma nacional, el amor a los suyos, al territorio que los vio nacer, el respeto y la sumisión a sus símbolos patrios, a su himno nacional, a su bandera, a su escudo de armas, a su identidad nacional y a su dolor cuando la patria peligra y a su impotencia por no poder actuar inmediatamente para defender a la patria amenazada. Convergen un cúmulo de sentimientos en nuestros compatriotas y hoy sobresale el de la gratitud por ese gesto espontáneo y solidario para con nuestra patria. Nunca lo olvidaremos. Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Ms. Perry, Councilmember Perry for hosting this and welcome to the delegation from Ecuador. It's an honor to have you here in the chambers. Y ahora muchos ecuatorianos en mi distrito, los contribuciones de su país y todos los residentes de Los Ángeles de Ecuador son muy importantes a la historia de esta ciudad. The contributions that Ecuadorians who live here in the city of Los Angeles have made have been very important to our city's history. So I look forward to celebrating with you on Sunday, the desfile. I will be at the parade on Sunday, riding along with our own Miss Council District Nine, Ms. Jan Perry. And so it's a great honor to have everybody here and thank you so much. Felicidades.
Miss Distritra número nueve, la señora Jan Perry, es un gran honor tenerla aquí ustedes.
Bienvenidos a Los Angeles. Thank you for presenting the Ecuadorian culture here in Los Angeles.
Para ver la celebración, para gozar de la canción, la comida, la cultura, es un gran orgullo. Y como latinos estamos demostrando la diversidad y la fuerza, la gente latina y tener este desfile también representa ese anuncio que nosotros latinos estamos progresando y estamos contribuyendo a esta sociedad. Muchas gracias.
So say thank you so much for being here, it's a great honor to be sharing this great event, to see such a great presentation, the honor to have, the ability to celebrate such great culture, music, food, is truly a reflection of all Latino communities, are contributed to this society, how this makes America such a great place, so thank you so much.
Este demuestra la comunidad tan latina, es lo que hace a los Estados Unidos, gran país.
Congratulations to all of Ecuador and the great community. This is the wonderful thing about Los Angeles, if all day long we could salute the great beauty of the people who are here, who are part of our relationship. But I also want to just point out the great man from Ecuador who has his star on the Walk of Fame in Hollywood, Jaime Han Marine again, to recognize the great voice of the Dodgers. Get out there Jaime, come on over there. Sergeant, take him over there.
Que está aquí con una estrella in Hollywood Boulevard.
Mister Rosenthal.
I just want to say that I've had the pleasure of being to the country and it's a beautiful place, not only Quito, but I went to Los Baños. And I hung out there for a while.
Y le urgo a todos los americanos que vayan a visitar este gran país y que compartan en la belleza que tienen que compartir en su país.
Thank you, Mr. President, to my colleagues, and I'm going to present this proclamation to the delegation on behalf of the mayor and the city council. En nombre del alcalde y el consejo de la ciudad y esperamos que se unan nosotros atrás para poder tomar fotografías, pero quiero presentar esta programación. Y verdaderamente tiene un sumario de todos los comentarios que se han hecho aquí en el día de hoy con respecto al día de independencia del Ecuador, en la historia y la celebración de la cultura, para aprender más y más de unos otros.
Mister Alex Padilla, Presidente del Consejo, señores concejales, señor Consejo General del Ecuador en Los Ángeles, señor Ministro, Reina del Ecuador, distinguidas autoridades de Los Ángeles, autoridades del Ecuador, invitados especiales, ciudadanos y ciudadanas. En mi calidad de diputado de la República del Ecuador y como delegado del Congreso Nacional, constituye un honor estar en la alcaldía de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles en representación de la primera función del Estado, acto trascendental en el cual se nota la apertura, ayuda y solidaridad de parte del señor Alcalde, señor Antonio Villarrigosa. Hablaré para él a través del señor Alex Padilla. Esta voluntad de parte del pueblo de Los Ángeles a nuestros conciudadanos, se torna imprescindible resaltar en forma breve la figura del señor Alcalde de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, Antonio Villarrigosa, ya que desde niño tuvo que sortear una serie de dificultades para buscar un espacio, logrando calar en el espíritu de los citadinos y convertirse en ejemplo de muchos latinoamericanos. A través de usted, señor Presidente del Consejo, el señor Alcalde usted está imponiendo un hito en su administración y sobre todo su mano generosa de ayuda a los latinos, entre los que cuentan los ecuatorianos hoy residentes en el país. Encuentran en usted un personaje adornado con virtudes incalculables y mano generosa para el bienestar de quienes integran la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Me siento sumamente honrado el estar aquí con la primera autoridad de Los Ángeles a través de usted, señor Alex Padilla, al señor Alcalde por este gesto de amistad con los ecuatorianos y de manera especial para con los residentes en los Estados Unidos de Norteamérica. Supo honrar su herencia de hispano que lo lleva en su sangre y que sabrá decididamente dignificar al migrante ecuatoriano mediante manifestaciones de solidaridad, de hermandad y apoyo constante. De igual manera, el cabildo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles supo calar en lo más profundo el sentimiento de ecuatorianidad y por ello tuvo el enorme acierto de recoger los planteamientos del Comité Ecuador 2000 y lograr que durante los primeros días de agosto se dé el inicio de la Semana Ecuatoriana. Por eso, que traigo un saludo respetuoso y lleno de agradecimiento de parte de la primera función del Estado de la República del Ecuador, a nombre propio y de los ecuatorianos residentes en Los Ángeles, al cabildo de la Ciudad y a usted, señor Alcalde, por su intermedio, al mismo tiempo a nombre y en representación del Congreso Nacional, en estricto cumplimiento de la ley y su reglamento, hace extensivo un justo y merecido reconocimiento reflejado en este acuerdo legislativo que por su labor desplegada y en beneficio de la comunidad ecuatoriana, reconocida dentro y fuera del país. Me voy a permitir hacer la entrega de este acuerdo a la concejala Jan Perry, para que entregue al señor Alcalde. Gracias, señor Presidente, gracias señores concejales, señoras y señores.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's get everybody in the back, okay, okay, assume your place, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Gracias señora Perry.
Felicidades a todos. Y muchísima suerte con sus ceremonias y celebraciones. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti.
La siguiente presentación sigue el concejal Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Muchas gracias, señor Presidente.
Quite a presentation from Ms. Perry, thank you very much.
Una gran presentación de la señora Perry y felicidades a la comunidad ecuatoriana para la celebración esta semana de la independencia ecuatoriana. Esta es una ocasión triste, en la cual despedimos a todos, pero verdaderamente no le vamos a decir adiós porque se va a quedar por aquí, como se ve, por estar aquí el señor Rocky Delgado. El señor Richard Llewellyn ha sido empleado por Rocky Delgado para que sea nuestro procurador de la ciudad, para que siga a Terry Bowers en el papel que le ha tenido, para correr la oficina del procurador de la ciudad. Una que ha elevado el nivel del talento en este país y que ha traído la seguridad pública a las vecindades y ha cuidado que todos hagamos los procedimientos correctos aquí en esta herradura legal sobre la que decidimos. Rich debe estar aquí, señor Delgado.
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a sad day for the city council, it's a sad day for the thirteenth council district, but it is a happy day for the city because Rich is not leaving the city family, he is joining another part of it and I hope will allow him and allow all of us to excel and achieve the greatness that we all dream about. Rich is an incredible talent, he will be filling in for Terry Bowers who has left for the private sector to make lots of money and it will be tough to fill Mr. Bowers shoes but I think if anybody can do it, it will be Rich Llewellyn. So I am extremely excited about this opportunity, I'm hopeful that in Rich's new role he will be able to do even more for this horseshoe here for the people who sit around it and I look forward to again being your partner and delivering all the things that make the city of Los Angeles a great place to live, work, and dream.
Proceda siguiendo haciendo la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, una gran ciudad en la que todos podemos trabajar, vivir y soñar.
Thank you very much Rocky for that and Rocky did promise me either a player to be named later or whatever interpretations of the law that I need, so I'd like them both please, thank you. Let me just say a couple things about Rich, we're going to be celebrating with all the Council District Thirteen who's over here and the rest of the staff that's watching right now in the field office, we're going to be celebrating later on this afternoon. Let me just say that all of our successes have been Rich's successes. We could not have had such a fun place to go to work every morning, every day, every afternoon. We couldn't have had such success, I think, in reaching out to the community and touching so many people's lives and we couldn't have had such success in changing what the Council District looks like, the doubling of the number of parks that we have, the schools that are being built that we worked with the school district on, legislative initiatives that Rich was into, a part of, everything that we did from the housing trust fund to equal benefits ordinance that extended justice to all employees and their partners who do business with the city of Los Angeles, it's too long of a list to name here today. But I think for so many people around the horseshoe, it's also who Rich is, not what he did that defines him. He isn't a... He is an adult in the truest sense of the word in politics. We all know sometimes it can devolve into all of us being sometimes like kids. And certainly, Rich has taught me to be a better councilmember, to be a wiser representative, to be a better person. And I know that everybody at Council District 13 feels the same way, too. So whether it's looking at Janice Han's outfits for the day or whether it's dispatching between Bill Fujioka and the CLA's office and everybody else who we had to negotiate. I know Rich was somebody who always kept his eye on the ball and somebody whose passion, whose grace was second to none. With that, I hope you will join me in congratulating Rich, wishing him well. And we will have him here for many years to come. So congratulations, Rich. And also, I wanted to mention Chris Caldwell, his partner who was with us here today. Thank you, Rich. Rich Llewellyn, ladies and gentlemen.
Muchas gracias.
One second. Rich, one second. We have some councilmembers who'd like to say a few words.
Tenemos varios miembros del Consejo que quisieran decir que hablar algo.
Ms. Han, you're on the cue. Your turn. Nice outfit, by the way.
Su ropa muy linda en el día de hoy.
Rich has already described it this morning as casual evening wear. Clearly, it was inappropriate for our Friday council meeting.
ropa de noche, pero obviamente inapropiada para una junta del Consejo. Pero bueno. La primera vez que tuve que ver con Rich en asuntos de la Ciudad por primera vez fue cuando tuve que...
He was always one of those, even in that large office, that you could call and get an answer about something and he cared for your problem. And Eric was extremely lucky to have Rich working him. And one of the things I find interesting, although there are comments sometimes, even if we don't get along down here, or we all have our own territories, I always appreciate propios territorios, siempre aprecio a todos los otros miembros del personal cuando opinan de los asuntos que todos tenemos en el corazón. Pero Rich no trabajó para mí, verdaderamente, pero siempre me daba consejos con respecto a los asuntos de los que estábamos ocupando. Y él creo que así como debe ser, todos trabajamos para la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Y somos mucho más... Y usted, Rocky, es muy dichoso, dichoso ante el Rich one trabajando para usted. Y Terry fue una gran persona y fue muy difícil de reemplazar. Pero...
The issues that the city attorney's office deals with are so huge and so great, and Rich is going to be absolutely the perfect person. La oficina del procurador son tan inmensas, pero Rich es la persona correcta. 90%... 90% de las llamadas que hacen mi oficina es del puerto de Los Ángeles y así que...
I will miss your fashion advice, but I hope you don't leave that role. I think you're very good at that. And I will admit, this is a strange thing. You know, really, when I'm looking in the mirror in the morning before I leave, I actually think to myself, what would Rich think about what I'm wearing? El pensamiento me viene, ¿qué pensaría Rich con respecto a lo que tengo puesto? Quité un collar esta mañana porque creí que era un poco demasiado y que usted me iba a regañar, pero bueno, así que continué mirando al Canal 35. Y de su opinión, no solamente en lo que hacemos, sino lo que nos ponemos. Gracias. Quisiera añadir aquí mis comentarios. Estoy un poco preocupada porque a mí no me da consejos ninguno con respecto... Como he visto, pero bueno, quizá soy una cabeza perdida.
Nosotros nos conocimos por primera vez hace muchos años cuando fue elegido Eric y yo tuvimos oportunidad de hablar porque trabajaba en Dreamworks.
Wow, that was such a smart choice. Someone who knows how to get things done, who tells it like it is, who is someone who has a heart, someone who is known across the county as a can-do kind of person. So we have missed you, not only in what you did before, but we'll miss you when you go over to Rocky's office, but I think it's Janice that we all enjoyed Terry and had a person to call. And so I've already made a list of issues as well that we want you to be available to us to help us because we do count on it. But Rich, you've been a good friend. I know that Eric has counted on you many, many times. Muchas, muchas veces cuando hemos hablado. Y él ha dicho, Rich es la persona con la que debemos hablar. Rich tiene una buena perspectiva. Así que todavía vamos a llamar a Rich para la perspectiva, pero con otro título, como procurador de la ciudad. Así que esperamos que nos llame y no solamente dar consejos a Janice y también a mí. Aunque como nos vestimos, personal de Eric está un poco lloroso esta mañana.
Councilmember Reyes.
I just want to rise and say thank you, Richard, for being such a gentleman, diplomat, very tough situations. He was rose-colored occasion and always found the women for everyone. So I thank you for that. And you must truly be unique to be the chief of staff of Garcetti senior, now Garcetti junior, and moving on with the city attorney. So great qualities that you bring to the city, fantastic products you produce, and the emotional support you have from the staff is very obvious, a true reflection of the character that you bring to the workplace. And so I'm glad you're staying with the city, able to work with you, and keep making this city the great city that it can be. So thank you so much, Richard.
Thank you, councilmember Reyes. Next, we have councilmember Labons and councilmember Weiss.
Thank you very much, Rich. When you look at Rich in the mirror, when you think of him in the morning, I see him in my rearview mirror because he is on his way. Chris, you guys have two wonderful children, you're on their way to take them to school, an early starter. Eric, to your right, in my observation, is one of the best political advisors that I know. Because any time I ask him for advice, and it possibly could have been contrary to what your interests were, he's certainly down the wrong street. He's very good. And you're so lucky, Rocky had to go back to do what Rocky has to do. It's an honor to have you as the chief deputy for the city attorney in Los Angeles, second largest city in the United States. And I thank you for it. And I know it'll only help us because you have an understanding of the city council and how we could better serve the people of Los Angeles. Rich, congratulations to you, Chris.
Mr. Laban, you afford me the opportunity, Mr. Weiss, just before, in the resolution here, one of the whereas says, whereas Rich Llewellyn thankfully does not live in Council District 13, but just north in another council district where he is an angel in a city of angels.
Councilmember Weiss.
Congratulations, Rich. I wish you all the best and look forward to working with you.
Now it's my turn, Rich. Rich, I know you and I have personally not spoken to each other all that often, but we have had interactions with each other. But I just want to share with you that what has come back to me is that you are a top-notch individual, very intelligent and very well-respected by many people in this building. And so I just wanted to thank you personally for all your hard work and the respect and the elevation you brought to the city council at many levels and for dedicating yourself so much to Eric who needs so much help. But we're all going to gather around him and we're going to help him all we can. And I just wanted to also say that Eric, it's very telling how much you care about Rich and how much he's given to you and your district and the city with the mixed emotions on your face. And also, it just goes to show that Rocky Delgado gets it because the smile he had on his face this morning looked like he had just won the lottery. So he understands what he's getting and he's very fortunate to have you on his team. So thank you, Rich, for choosing to stay with the city team. Now it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, I want to talk a little bit about CD 13 in a second, but first, I'm very excited about the opportunity that Rocky is giving me. My first law job in Los Angeles after being a law clerk was working in private practice at what was then Redmond McKinsey. And one of my cases was working, I represented the SRO, single occupancy housing on Skid Row, in the city versus county homeless litigation with the city attorney's office. One of my biggest jobs when I was actually then worked for county supervisor at Edelman was actually with then city attorney Jim Han trying to figure out how to settle the city versus county homeless litigation. And so my history with the city attorney's office goes back decades. I'm a great fan of the office. I think it's an amazing opportunity and amazing office and it's an amazing opportunity for me, which I'm very grateful for. I'm also very grateful I get to keep working in the City of L.A. The last four years have been unbelievably sort of learning times for me, fun for me, challenging for me, and a job where I feel like every day I go to work with people who care about this community, who are trying to make a difference and who actually are succeeding in making a difference. And I think there are problems with term limits. I would like to see them extended, but many of the people around this horseshoe brought their new energy because they got an open chance. And it's amazing to watch how you all realize that you have these short times to make your mark, taken off the sprinter block and going. And it's phenomenal and I hope the city's people see that and appreciate it. And I know how hard you work and how supportive you've been of me, of Eric, of our staff. It's been a great ride. The staff in CD 13, sorry, guys, is the best in the building. And it's... Eric put together an amazing team. They're smart, they're fun, they're committed, they're hardworking, they make a difference every day, and it's been a wonderful job working there. And I think the reason it's such a team is because of Eric. He's an amazing leader who has a vision for the world that's big and recognizing that in fact you aren't going to get to the big places without taking baby steps every day. And it's a wonderful combination that few people have. And I can't thank him enough for the opportunity. I can't say enough how I'm going to miss working with him on a daily basis. But I hope I can serve him personally, politically, the city personally, politically and all of y'all in my new job. And thank you for all the support.
Thank you. Eric, I think you need to hand him the proclamation now. You need to learn how to let go, okay?
Sorry, say it again?
I think you need to hand him the proclamation now. You need to learn how to let go, Eric. Come on, you can do it.
There you go. Well, no, Dennis Einstein still has to sign it.
Okay. Thank you. Our next presentation is from councilmember Tom Laban.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members. It's always a good day on Friday. We have a great delegation from our sister city of Nagoya, our oldest sister city, as we know this next year. Sister Cities International will celebrate its 50th anniversary, then started by President Eisenhower as a people-to-people program. And Nagoya since 1959 has been our best friend. And I'm pleased here to have with me the deputy mayor of the City of Nagoya, Deputy Mayor Takayai Sugamato, who is a deputy mayor to mayor Motuwa, who was an absolutely wonderful host for us when I led a delegation of 90 Angelinos as they had their Sister City Festival. So we wanted to personally welcome you. Last night, we had dinner at Trax Restaurant. They're hosted by the port, you know, Janice has arranged these sister ports throughout the world, including the Port of Nagoya and the Port of Los Angeles. And we were able to go up to 1,200 Elysian Park Drive, Dodger Stadium, and they got to see a little Dodgers play and win last night, and they're very pleased. So this is the official formal welcome. Deputy Mayor. It's so nice. Arigato ariya.
Arigato. Alex Padilla Gitcho, los angeles, the city senate's chairman, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, my friends, my sisters, my brothers, my sisters, my friends, my sisters, my brothers, my sisters, my friends, 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 my brothers, my sisters, Now, Nagoya has held a Japanese exhibition, Aichi Expo, in May. On May 2, Labonge Committee members, from Los Angeles, many Nagoyans visited Nagoya to see Aichi Expo. This exhibition will continue until June 25. And as Mr. Labonge had the opportunity to visit us back in May, we are hosting the 2005 World Expo in Nagoya City and Aichi Prefecture as we speak, and it's going to last until September 25th. So please, everybody, do come to Nagoya and visit us. At the end of the day, we wish to thank Los Angeles City's continued contribution and the Nagoyan community. And last but not least, I wish all of you present here the best wishes, as well as President Padilla, council members, and the citizens of Los Angeles, best wishes and prosperous future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Also, Jean, to see you here is the longest member of our sister city. Jean, you want to say a word because you're so special. She's right here, and there's a big Nisei parade on Sunday. Just say a little word.
On behalf of the delegation, we want to thank the city council for their warm hospitality.
Thank you. Ernest Heters here, and also the great chairman of the Los Angeles-Nagoya Sister City, and executive with the Port of L.A. I'm pulling you up, Norman, just to say, hey, Nagoya-Los Angeles, great friends. Arigato.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Labonge. Do you have a second presentation, Mr. Labonge?
And also, as we go from our great sister city of Nagoya, we have a special presentation. I would like to ask the council general for the Korea, Young Wong Lee, Deputy Council General Chung, Mr. Young Chung Che, and Mr. Young Ji Ma Kang to join me as we recognize, commemorate the 60th anniversary of Korean Independence Day. And I just know, members, as you know, and Mr. Rosendahl, in America, here about 101 years ago, the first Koreans immigrated to this great country. They have great pride. In our city, they first came to the area near USC at Jefferson in Vermont, moved up to Olympic Boulevard, and now Wilshire Boulevard, and now soon coming to Hollywood Boulevard. The Korean community is very special, but I wanted to recognize them on their Independence Day. It marks the 60th anniversary of their independence and their long history. As anyone has a challenge, as we know, not the times in history were not good for some teams or some oppression by others, but we overlooked that as we looked to the future and worked together as a world of one. And especially here to salute Korea for their independence. In the census, we have over 1 million Koreans living in the United States, over 360,000 here in California, and over almost 200,000 in Los Angeles County, and 91,000 in the city of Los Angeles. I'm proud that the 4th and the 10th district and the 13th have all that in their heart, as well as Mr. Smith's district. And I'd like to ask Mr. Smith to join me because I think what's beautiful about Los Angeles and migration and immigration, as one lives in a city, they come in one part of the city, and then they do a little better, and they entrepreneur, and they all buy homes out in Greg Smith's district in the West Valley. Our sister city of Busan was established in 1971, and it's just important to salute Korea on their Independence Day. So on behalf of Mayor Villarosa, our president, Mr. Padilla, and all the members of the city council, we present this commendation to salute you, council general, for your special day of 60 years of independence. Come, Samida.
I'm very happy to join Mr. Labonge in this. You know, the fastest growing population in my district is Korean, and we have a very large Korean contingent and new Korean churches and a lot of great Korean food. And also, two members of my staff are Korean, so we're very, very happy to participate with the Korean community and welcome you and congratulate you on 60 years, and thank you very much.
Ms. Han?
For the council general, Ms. Han. Han Rivers, named after Janice Han, right?
That's right. Thank you, and I am very pleased to be hosting the official celebration in the city of Los Angeles on Monday in San Pedro at the Korean Friendship Bell, where we will be honoring friendship and independence, and remembering again the great gift from the people of Korea to the United States with the Friendship Bell in 1976 that we now ring three times on July 4th, our Independence Day, on August 15th, your Independence Day. And I believe we do it, actually, I think we do it two more times, once on New Year's Eve, and then once on Constitution Day, which I think is in September. So we invite everyone to come down at noon on Monday to beautiful San Pedro, where we ring the bell, in a symbolic gesture of our friendship, and continue to pray for the peaceful unification of Korea.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Han.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Councilman Tom Labonge. Honorable Alex Padilla, President of Los Angeles City Council and members of the city council. I'm indeed honored to stand before you this morning to accept the city council's resolution recognizing the 60th anniversary of Korea's independence on August 15, 2005. The support the city of Los Angeles has generously extended to the people of Korea spans back in time more than 60 years. On August 29, 1942, the Korean flag was raised at City Hall in solidarity for the Korean independence movement. Since then, Korea has had special place in its heart for Los Angeles, which may help explain why the largest population of Koreans outside of Korea has chosen to reside in this rural city. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my special gratitude to Councilman Tom Labonge for initiating this resolution, which should prove to be another symbol of pride for Korean Los Angeles. It means so much to the Korean American community that the city of Los Angeles acknowledges this important and glorious day in our history. I'm sure this gesture will further enhance already friend relations between Korea and Los Angeles. Please know that we will never forget your unremedying kindness. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Labonge, does that conclude your presentations?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we move to the items on the agenda.
Mr. President, I hit my head.
Councilmember Labonge.
I did a thing that Dorothy would never do, you know. Dorothy says there's no place like home, you know, and this is home. And you and you and you are here, and these people are here who are so special. Come on up, Los Pablo Doras.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I'm joined here by Russell, Rushmore Cervantes, the great general manager of the pueblo, and also I have the great mayor of our great city of San Gabriel, which is the oldest city in Los Angeles County, Mayor Julie Castano. Thank you. Give her a big hand, Mayor. Will, get up here. Unfortunately, I bet you could have walked from Mission San Gabriel to City Hall by the time it took to get this point in the agenda. I'm sorry, it's been a great day, but it talks about Los Angeles and its diversity. From the 44 original Los Pablo Doras, of which you know we're a great diverse group of people, including 26 of the original 44 of African-American descent. Of that group that came over 224 years ago, they came to find the city of Los Angeles on the banks of the river. And on September 4th, which is our city's birthday, the great mayor of the city of Los Angeles, Antonio Villarosa, will lead us in a city's birthday celebration. All our offices are invited to attend and to participate with the great Los Pablo Doras in this effort to promote the great history of our city. So with that in mind, I'm going to call on our mayor of San Gabriel, again, the oldest city, a beautiful city, which has a great mission, which is all about the history of this region, for some remarks. Mayor Considerno.
Mayor, please proceed.
President Padilla, honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council, greetings from San Gabriel, the birthplace of the Los Angeles region. Each year, the first week of September marks over 200 years of San Gabriel and Los Angeles' shared historical, cultural, and spiritual connection. On September 8, 1771, San Gabriel Mission Archangel was established as the fourth mission in the chain of 21 California missions. As the original European settlement, north of San Diego and south of San Luis Obispo, San Gabriel became the mother of every community in the Great Valley, which bears its name. In 1781, the then 10-year-old San Gabriel Mission was the staging area where Los Angeles' original settlers, known as Los Pablo Doras, prepared for their objective to establish an agricultural colony along what is now known as the Los Angeles River. During the first week of September 1781, the settlers left San Gabriel Mission to complete their final nine-mile trek to the Los Angeles River, where on September 4th, 1781, they established El Pueblo de la Reina de Los Angeles, today the great metropolitan city of Los Angeles. We are very proud of San Gabriel's place in history and importance in developing the region, and we are especially proud to share with Los Angeles important key chapters in California's history. This year, over September Labor Day weekend, San Gabriel Mission celebrates 234 years with the three-day Fiesta de San Gabriel. And Los Angeles celebrates 224 years with Los Pablo Doras Walk to Los Angeles and festivities at El Pueblo Historical Monument. At 6:00 AM Sunday, September 4th, we will leave San Gabriel Mission to reenact the five final nine-mile trek of Los Angeles' original settlers, to be greeted with a warm Los Angeles welcome and festivities at El Pueblo Historical Monument, celebrating Los Angeles' 224 years. The walk to Los Angeles is an opportunity to honor Los Angeles' original settlers and to recognize the contributions of generations of people from all cultures, ethnic backgrounds, who have come to the region and made our communities what they are today. This is the People's Walk, celebrating our diverse multicultural past and present and future. We look forward to welcoming Mayor Villarosa and the members of council to San Gabriel. We invite you and the entire Los Angeles city family to lace up your walking shoes and join us in San Gabriel on Sunday, September 4th at 6:00 AM. Your support and participation in the Walk to Los Angeles and founding festivities reflect a vibrant new vision of what it means to be an Angelino. And it would set the stage for 2006, when Los Angeles celebrates 225 years. I'd like to quickly introduce San Gabriel Councilmembers David Gutierrez and Kevin Salkin standing at my left, representative of Los Pablo Doras 200, the residents of Los Angeles' original settlers, San Gabriel Mission Fiesta representatives and Mission Queen in court, T. Willard Hunter, originator and organizer of the Walk to L.A. in 1981, and El Pueblo General Manager Rushmore Cervantes, and members of Los Angeles Birthday Planning Committee, including City of San Gabriel and El Pueblo staff, and Louis Alvarado, Mayor of Griffith Park. All of us thank you for inviting us to join us this morning. And on behalf of the city of San Gabriel and my colleagues, please accept the San Gabriel flag as a token of our special relationship with Los Angeles and our city's shared history. Thank you very much. One bandera de la ciudad de San Gabriel, representando la unión entre los ángeles y San Gabriel.
Yes, council members, good morning. We have packets of information for the walk as well as the celebration. Mayor Costanza, thank you for joining us. And we want to extend warm wishes for the birthday celebration. And we want to extend warm wishes for the birthday celebration. As usual, El Pablo will have a wonderful celebration, a great nine-mile walk, and we'll have plenty of entertainment, food, cake, and artisans. So I look forward to having as many council members as possible, and I hope that we have a great turnout. So we'll have a great time. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And we're going to be working with the office of the 14th district and coordinate with the mayor because it's going to be a great celebration. How many of you made that walk? Eric's made the walk. Billy, Billy boy. Bill, you got a walk to do. It's a great day. The only thing I want you to do on that walk sometime, I hope the mayor supports me on this, both our mayor and the mayor of San Gabriel. But I want you to walk up to Cal State L.A. at halfway point, get that university involved in this great walk. Get more support because it's a great thing to do. Members, we'll see you on September 4th of Mr. Garcetti.
Just for a second, I want to thank you so much, Tom. So many of us invoke the story of the Pablo Doras because it is the most incredible metaphor, and there's no great city or metropolitan area in the world that started the way that we did, with that diversity, with those 46 that set out, 44 that made it, 12 families, 11 made it, Mulatto, Mestizo, Negro, Criollo, Indian, Mulatto, the entire diversity of the folks that are there, the names, you know, Camero, and Lara, and Mesa, Moreno, Navarro, Quintero, Rodriguez, Rosas, Vanegas, Villa, Vincentio, all of these parts that are our history, the two routes that they took through Baja California and up the coast in the Gulf of California as well. I know that when we take the walk this time, those eight miles that link our two cities, and mayor and council members, it's great to have you here. You know, 8.4, depends on the route. Yeah, exactly.
I told you he's a Rhodes Scholar.
The walk, though, I know when they did it in 1781, they were promised a couple mayors, a couple horses, a couple mules, and so maybe one of these years, we can really incentivize folks. We'll give them a little plot of land, a place to farm in the cornfields, maybe with Mr. Reyes's permission, some animals, and then we'll really get a resettling of this incredible place. So congratulations, Felizidad. I hope this is the first year in a few years I'm actually going to be in town, so I'm going to make my very best effort to be there, and I hope to walk alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric Garcetti, and I'm sure they were promised a high school as well.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Labonge. Thank you to all of our guests. Next, we move to the items called special on the agenda.
Item four was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay, we move to item four.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's two requests that we have on a technical motion on number four. First of all, that we have a report back from the city attorney to determine whether this new ordinance would cover the recently completed superstore ordinance, whether it would cover major retailers, or would it have an impact on the recent mergers by Federated dealing with major retailers. And also, an item that we discussed at the committee to add another section to the ordinance in which we would include a notification of sale, transfer of ownership, closure, or adaptive reuse of the facility, and the notification period should be 90 to 180 days.
Councilmember Parks, councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Parks. Thank you so much for those additions to the ordinance. I think it makes it a stronger one once we get it back. Colleagues, I'll call your attention to this item, which was brought to my attention by folks on behalf of potentially impacted employees of grocery stores. What we understand to be happening is a corporation purchasing the Bristol Farms chain with the potential risk of stores being closed down, employees being let go, but in the near future, substitute supermarkets, if you will, being opened with new employees coming in at lower wages, lesser benefits, because it may be good for somebody's corporate model. We know in the city of Los Angeles, probably better than anybody in California, anybody in the country, what a grocery store strike can do. Not just for the employees of grocery stores, but for every single family in the city. More than any other type of retail establishment, we have intimate relationships with our grocery stores. We have to eat, we have to buy food. Families go at minimum on a weekly basis to the grocery store. Nothing is more fundamental in terms of purchase than the food we put into our bodies. And so we know where the milk is, we know where the vegetables are, we know where the eggs are, and everything else that we buy in weekly bases. And we know who the personnel is. And we know who the personnel is that helps us, and we know who the personnel is that sometimes isn't as cordial or as friendly or helpful. And so I think it's appropriate for the city council to pursue this issue. I think it's appropriate based on a couple of models that we have, including the service sector contractors with the city of Los Angeles. We have a retention ordinance in place to ensure that the employees of those companies aren't being used, aren't being abused. And we're trying to expand that spirit of the service worker retention ordinance to a different category of establishments. But if I can concede the balance of my time to the attorney, there's a speaker card that's been submitted. Mr. Chair, I know we've had public hearing on this item, but I want to concede my balance, the balance of my time to the attorney to say a few more words while we have background.
Please come forward. We'll open public comment on this item.
Thank you, President Padilla. Very briefly, the city attorney has started looking at this ordinance. It's similar to ordinances passed in other jurisdictions. It's similar to a statute that California legislature passed in the last year. New York has gone in this direction, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and others, San Francisco as well. It's a sound ordinance, and it serves some important purposes.
Thank you very much. And so colleagues, the item before us today calls for the state attorney to draft an ordinance that'll be back before us to adopt. I ask for your support of this motion, and certainly of the ordinance once it comes back.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to raise the support of my colleague, Mr. Padilla, and his effort here. We heard this in committee, and I appreciate Mr. Padilla's moving this quickly, and we were happy to work with him on that. Really wanted to thank also the folks who stand by our men and women, people like our man in the chair right now, who is our council president, who is a UFCW member himself, people like my grandparents, who were both members of the union. And we've been able to work very closely in making sure that in a time that there is so much chaos and uncertainty for many workers, that we can try to make that better, not just for the workers, but for communities. And Mr. Parks's suggestion, too, to add notification for the communities, I think really strengthens this as well in a way that he was sharing and other people have shared. Sometimes there's grocery stores that say they're going out of business, and a 99-cent store comes in a week later without any ability for the community to weigh in and to, especially in areas...
companies aren't being used, aren't being abused. And we're trying to expand that spirit of the service worker retention ordinance to a different category of establishments. But if I can concede the balance of my time to the attorney...
Please come forward. We'll open public comment on this item.
Abriremos el comentario público respecto a este artículo.
Thank you, President. Padilla.
Gracias, President Padilla.
The city attorney has started looking at this ordinance. It's similar to ordinances passed in other jurisdictions. It's similar to a statute that California legislature passed in the last year. New York has gone in this direction, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and others, San Francisco as well. It's a sound ordinance, and it serves some important purposes. Thank you very much. And so colleagues, the item before us today calls for the city attorney to draft an ordinance that'll be back before us to adopt. I ask for your support of this motion, and certainly of the ordinance once it comes back.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to rise in support of my colleague, Mr. Padilla, and his effort here. We heard this in committee, and appreciate Mr. Padilla moving this quickly, and we're happy to work with him on that. Really wanted to thank also the folks who stand by our men and women, people like our man in the chair right now, who is a UFCW member himself, people like my grandparents, who were both members of the union, and we've been able to work very closely in making sure that in a time that there is so much chaos and uncertainty for many workers, that we can try to make that better, not just for the workers, but for communities, and Mr. Parks's suggestion to add notification for the communities, I think really strengthens this as well in a way that he was sharing, and other people have shared. Sometimes there's grocery stores that say they're going out of business, and a 99 cent store comes in a week later without any ability for the community to weigh in and to, especially in areas that are unassured by supermarkets or other markets, to be able to have their voices heard. So this is a very good step forward. The precedent is well established for those who think that we're meddling in the marketplace. This is a critical anchor for our communities, and a critical anchor for so many of our neighborhood shopping centers when they do have those supermarkets. So I rise in full support, and I want to thank Mr. Padilla for doing this today.
Los compradores humildes de las comunidades.
Councilmember Reyes.
Así que es Consejal Reyes.
I do want to rise and thank my colleague for bringing this to our attention and creating a focus.
Quiero hablar en apoyo y darles gracias a mi colega por subrayar este tema y enfocar esto en esto, con los cambios en nuestra comunidad. Hemos visto que Los Angeles ha sido una transición muy rápida y nos dan cuenta que la clase media se está evaporando de una manera.
It's very striking, the levels of jobs that we have and their range of pay, especially at the entry level, and this industry has been going down over the years. Yet our cost of housing has gone up astronomically, cost of gas is going up. All these issues that talk about quality of life, and always sustain the quality of life in the city of L.A. has been pretty dramatic. So I do appreciate this effort. It does speak to the issues of discretion, how we not look at the physical infrastructure, but the social infrastructure, and how we develop a quality of life for everyone. The middle class disappearing in the city of L.A., it's something that we should be focused on, to determine how we can best address that sense of balance in the cities that's ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. Public comment is not closed, and no more council members wishing to speak. The item, move the item to the roll.
No hay alguien más que quiera hablar. Vamos a abrir los votos, cerrar los votos. Tabulemos.
Twelve eyes. Twelve eyes, that item is approved.
Este artículo ha sido aprobarado.
Fourth with, that item will move forward forthwith. Without objection, we go out of order to item number 28.
Entonces vamos a saltar el orden.
Item 28 to be taken out of order without objection.
Para tomar el número 28 fuera de orden, sin protesta, sin oposición.
Okay, Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues. Item 28 is the item that we introduced as a special on Wednesday and continue the discussion today relative to mosquito abatement district. Mosquito abatement district. What they don't call spring, what they call dropping, dropping, pelotism in Hanson Dam, sensitive environmental habitat for the purposes of trying to mitigate the growth of mosquito population there. With all the rains that we've had this year, there's an overabundance of growth of the mosquito population in Hanson Dam that combined with the threat of West Nile virus, and we hear every day, is closer and closer to our city of West Nile virus cases and including fatalities. I think it's proven on the agency's part to want to be proactive about mitigating the mosquito population growth in Hanson Dam. We called the special, we had our recreation and park staff here answering questions as to their coordination with those agencies, along with the Department of Water Power, along with the selection of the larvicide. The larvicide, we have pesticides, they chose a larvicide to go after mosquito larvae specifically, and we discussed the method of application. If you recall then, my primary concern was not, was threefold. Number one, the specific substance they were going to be using. Number two, the method of application, and we heard the answers that day. But number three, how we're communicating with the community. And so last night, there was a very good meeting with dozens of people at the Lake Forest Recreation Center informing the public, informing community leaders, informing stakeholders. Because in Hanson Dam, you have swimmers, you have joggers, you have fishers, you have soccer players, and baseball players, and equestrians, and so many other users of the recreational facility, who wanted to make sure that not only were things being done in a safe manner, but were being communicated appropriately. Happy to report that it was a very good meeting, a very informative meeting, and everybody walked away very satisfied with the process. So I just want to thank you for your support of this item last Wednesday. I want to thank the department, various departments for the work that they've done on such short notice, and to all the people who live out in the north of San Fernando Valley. Please be aware that the dropping of those pellets does begin on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more council members who wish to speak.
Ya que veo que no hay ningún otro consejal que quiera hablar. Este artículo.
We'll now be open to, we'll open the roll on this item.
Se va a abrir el voto con respecto a este artículo.
Close the roll, announce the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes.
Se cierra el voto, dos sesis. Se ha aprobado este artículo.
We now move to the next item on our agenda.
The item eight, which was called special by Councilmember Parks, and there has been an amending motion circulated.
Okay, Councilmember Parks.
Just a amending motion to give a direction to the police department to provide a quarterly report to public safety.
Mandar una dirección para que preparen.
Okay, seeing no more council members who wish to speak on this item, we'll vote on this item as amended. Please open the roll.
Al departamento de la policía.
Close the roll, announce the vote.
Que se abra el voto, se cierra el voto.
Twelve eyes, this item is approved. We now move to the next item on the agenda.
Item 10 was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Okay, we now move to item number 10. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. My questions were answered by the department, so I suggest we go ahead and approve the community report.
Okay. Where the report before us, we'll open the roll on this item.
Se ha abierto el voto, se cierra.
Close the roll, announce the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes, this item is approved.
Se ha aprobado entonces este artículo.
Item 26 was called special by Councilmember Gru.
Okay, we now move to item 26.
La señora Gru, Consejal Gru. Señora Gru.
Mr. Parks and I are referring it to the Transportation Committee, but we'll be having a comeback to council next Friday.
Vamos a remitir al departamento de transportación. Entonces se va a remitir al comité.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Entonces el próximo artículo.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Okay, we'll now open it up to public comment. We have public comment cards that have been filled out.
Comentario público.
We first bring to the microphone Bill Hodley, Hodie.
It's Bill, yeah, it's Bill Huie.
Huie, thank you, Bill.
Hi, my name is Bill Huie. I do public relations for the Florentine Gardens. Hello to President Padilla and all the esteemed members of the Los Angeles City Council. In the near future, a matter is going to come before this council, which will call for the council members to vote on whether or not to use the power of eminent domain to take the Florentine Gardens Restaurant nightclub away from its present owner, Mr. Kenneth McKenzie. The facts are, number one, two years ago, the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council recommended that the city of Los Angeles build a new fire station and storage building at the Florentine Gardens site. Mr. Joel Fisher, the president of Hollywood United Neighborhood Council, who led the push for this decision, never revealed publicly that he is on the payroll of the Hollywood Palace, the Florentine Gardens' main competitor, which is two blocks away. This is a clear conflict of interest. Mr. Fisher betrayed the public trust because he uses official city position for personal gain to get rid of his client's main competition. He uses official position to close down a business that has existed for 68 years and to convert it into a community center and storage building for the fire department. After Mr. Fisher's recommendation, the matter went to the Oversight Committee for approval, where we spoke before the Oversight Committee in front of Mr. William Fujioda, the chairperson, and informed him and the committee about Mr. Fisher's conflict of interest. Still, the recommendation was approved, and it went to the Department of Public Works. We spoke before the Department of Public Works about Mr. Fisher's conflict of interest, and still the matter, the recommendation was approved, and now it's in the pipeline on the way to the city council. Now we stand before the city council stating the facts, that from the very beginning, this entire process was flawed. This is a conflict of interest. It invalidates the due process against Mr. Kenny McKenzie, the owner of the Florentine Gardens for the last 27 years. The possibility of the city of Los Angeles taking away his property has been a nightmare for this man for four years. Fighting this unfair situation has consumed his life, has cost him a fortune, and has been a source of everyday stress. What Mr. Fisher has done to Mr. McKenzie is malicious and evil. And when this matter comes up for a city council vote, please put a nightmare to this and correct the injustice against Mr. McKenzie. Also, it appears that Mr. Joel Fisher has a little bit of a racist agenda, because he was quoted in the Hollywood Independent newspaper on April of 2003 that the reason why he chose the Florentine Gardens site is because it does not have a mixed crowd. This is a clear racist statement, and this is another motive. To the best of our knowledge, Mr. Fisher has never been inside the Florentine Gardens, and it does have a mixed crowd. Even though it is very popular with Latino, people from all ethnic groups visit it every week to have a good time in a safe environment in Hollywood. You know, today we're talking about diversity, we've been celebrating diversity, diversity, diversity. Well, Mr. McKenzie is a Peruvian descent, and he has been a fighter for diversity from the day he bought the Florentine Gardens in 1979. The Florentine Gardens has been open since 1938, and since that time, Hollywood's biggest stars have performed there. We've already lost too many...
And if I could just sorry to ask you to conclude, if you could.
I've got about three sentences I've done.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'm scripted here, okay. The Florentine Gardens has been open since 1938, it's a landmark. We have to stop killing off Hollywood landmarks. Too many have been lost, we're killing off L.A.'s heritage. Any other use of the Florentine Gardens other than what it is today will be the death of the Florentine Gardens. In a city so ethnically diverse, so rich in culture, and sees itself as a leader in progressive thinking, people like Joel Fisher are bad for the city of Los Angeles. When this matter comes to a vote, please end the nightmare for Kenneth McKenzie. He came into Hollywood when this neighborhood was in very poor condition 27 years ago. This is not how we should repay someone who has worked so hard to turn Hollywood around and make it exciting again. How would any of us feel if we put 27 years of our life into a community, into a business, and then we have to fight the power of City Hall for four years to take away our property and destroy our lives? Please put an end to the nightmare. Thank you very much. My name is Bill Huie.
Thank you, Bill. Colleagues, before we continue on public comment, we do have a special one item, and since it is a 12-word item, I'd like to ask that that item be before, so we'll go back to public comment.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, public comment speakers, for indulging counsel. Since the posting of today's agenda, the county has transmitted to the Controller's office a statement of proper valuations to be inserted into the ordinance, levying taxes and fixing rates. Due to the upcoming council recess, the ordinance must be adopted on or before August 19th. Due to the two council district vacancies and previously approved council member absences, there will not be 12 members at any of the three council meetings next week. Immediate action is required to present the ordinance for first consideration today, so it may be adopted either today or by next Friday on second consideration. Council must first make findings pursuant to government code section 54954.2 before considering the subsequent motion.
Thank you. The item before us now is the consideration of special one, that it is of urgent nature, the Rule 23. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you, that item is now before us, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. The reason for the urgency is that the city receives such late notice as to the information, and it's absolutely necessary, that the city controller calculates the tax rate necessary to address our outstanding bond, bonds for the fiscal year. And so we have to stay on this schedule, particularly in light of the number of council members that may be here over the next week, and so that's why we're presenting this special today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Seeing no one else on the speaker queue, that item is now before us. Council colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Fourth with.
Vamos a mandarlo directamente.
Thank you. We'll now go back to public comment. Our next speakers, Dr. Dan Weissman and Candido Mores.
For you, Ms. Gru, I answer the first time. Where's Alex? Yeah, okay, first time.
Thank you, Dr. Weissman.
Madam President, members of the council, thank you so much. I think I'm going to put on another hat again, because as a member of the Board of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, don't anybody laugh. The laughter is over. We're real. We have a council. It works. Want to tell you what we did on Wednesday. We had the privilege, the pleasure, of discussing the Renew L.A. process that Mr. Smith has been bringing forth. And with relatively little discussion, with relatively little argument, we all recognized and voted unanimously to do what we can to support this concept. Mr. Smith, thank you so very much for bringing the ideas forward. Members of the council, I want to tell you a little story. Mr. Labange called this a home a few moments ago. This is our home, isn't it? Well, suppose this was our home, and we had to put all of our trash in the room above the one we're living in right now. Got a nice tall ceiling here, it's gorgeous, it's beautiful piece of architecture. If all of our trash had to go up there, what would we worry about? We'd worry about not having a ceiling that leaked. We would want the best possible ceiling we can, and we'd want something a good deal better than two sheets of black plastic, wouldn't we? Well, all of our landfills right now are at 1,000 to 2,000 feet in the northern part of town. I have a 60, 70-year history of involvement with waste paper, junk, trash. Call it trash if you will. Trash for one person is treasure for another. And I think I mentioned the other day about the good things I brought out of the trash barrel at my grandfather's place. Trash now is a different story. If we put our food trash, the stuff we got from McDonald's, which has salmonella in it, upstairs, above us, we wouldn't want our plumbing to leak, would we? That's what we're doing with landfills right now. They're all at the headwaters of our city's water supply, at the headwaters of our city's downflow. And therefore, the idea of eliminating landfills, eliminating the need to put these materials in the ground, and recycling them for reuse, makes great good sense for me. I hope we can work together with the Neighborhood Council, Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and other Neighborhood Councils to put these ideas forward, to bring them into reality. 20 years is too long, Mr. Smith, we can't wait that long. Let's get to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Candido.
Good morning, council members. One of the things that I would ask of you is, and I come here all the time and say it, we are the greatest city in the greatest country in the world. And why? Because of the people, the people that live here. So I have a button here that we're going to pass out each and every one of you. And what it says on it is recycle. You can do it. If you believe in us, if you believe in us and allow us to go through the process, we will make it happen. We will end landfills. Mr. Viragosa asked us to dream. Well, we're not only going to dream, we're going to participate, and we're going to get out there to make sure that we end landfills. And to the four aces. Han, Perry, Mr. Gray Smith, and Mr. Padilla, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to explore other avenues. Thank you very much. So we will pass things out, and again, you don't have to worry, just remind yourself each and every day, we need to recycle. Mr. ...
Thank you very much. Our next speakers are from the South Central Farmers, if you'd like to come up. Obviously, I have several cards today, and I know that you'll acknowledge those individuals you'd like to have speak. We only have about a minute and a half left on public speaking, but I think, colleagues, we could extend it for a five-minute period of time for public speaking.
Buenos dias, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Guadalupe. Soy campesina del jardín comunitario South Central. Este día, por lo que me di cuenta, los temas que se trataron en este lugar fueron motivo de celebración, y cada uno de ustedes dijeron congratulation. Será posible que algún día nos digan a nosotros congratulation, campesino de South Ya pueden seguir sembrando en su jardín, pueden sembrar sus nopalas, sus cilantro. Será posible ese día? Yo ya he terminado.
This was a day of celebration here at the council, and I want to say to you, all members of the council, will there ever be a day of celebration for us, for the farmers, who will say, you can continue farming, you can continue planting your cilantro, your nopalas? Would I be able to say that?
Thank you.
Good morning, city council. My name is Vanessa Costa. My name is Vanessa Costa, for the South Central Farmers Coalition. Today, as we speak, Congresswoman Maxine Waters is touring the South Central 14-acre community garden located at 41st Street and between Alameda and Long Beach. Congresswoman Maxine Waters expressed her support and is there now to help save and preserve this wonderful project. She expressed in her August 3 letter to the co-op leaders, Rufina Huertas and Tezza Samak, how unfair, quote, "How unfair it is to take away this vital resource away from the community after all the work that went into successfully fighting an unwanted trash incinerator." It's really sad that the city of Los Angeles could not interfere in this property and buy it back from Horowitz for good. I also wanted to let you guys know that these people, these are the other Latinos who work hard, who feed families, who feed communities, who provide community workshops, that develop youth programs and farmers' markets, nutritional programs, and they never, ever received a proclamation from a city recognizing their work. I want to introduce to you Princess Elizabeth of the South Central Farmers.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Elizabeth Akero. I'm the daughter of a farmer on 41st and Alameda. I'm here to speak to Ms. Jan Perry regarding to our August 5 conversation regarding to the three lots that are available for the farmers. There is a small problem with those inpatient lots. They're measures, they measure six feet times 25 feet. Ms. Perry, do you, do you not understand that there are many families, approximately 350 families? You are making a joke on us. All of, all of you present, all of you present, those lots do not accommodate to three families. Ms. Perry, do you want to cover the sun with one finger, City Council? Let me remind you all, let me remind you all that this garden helps other communities members. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, we do have just about a minute and a half left on public speaking.
Take urgent action to deed this property to the South Central Farmers. I say to you, South Central Farmers, you have fought the righteous fight for the land, for the Creator's plan, and encouraged organic gardening, fertilizers, and insect control by drawing the minerals from the earth and the sky to nourish your family and friends. And we have not even discussed the rare and endangered plants that have reemerged because of the loving care of the South Central Farmers. My pedal's going to you over this unnecessary challenge to your already blessed and stressed lives. Take urgent action, Council, to save this land for them. Mr. Hart, which can have another area. He will only add the heat and the global warming. You can have credits from the federal government to reduce the global warming by keeping this carbon sinkhole, this space that God has given for the people, for the hard-working class that supports your every move.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, for being here today. Appreciate your-
I heard Flora brought some seeds. She wanted to pass out to each one of you.
Great, great, thank you. Thank you all for being here today. Mr. Clerk, our next order of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those would be posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear. Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Yes, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, just want to announce to all of you, to everybody watching at home, that we have two great activities taking place tomorrow, the 7th Council District, starting at 7:00 AM. For you early risers, we have a junior triathlon. Not a full-distance triathlon, but enough of a challenge for adults, and we're targeting young people who are interested in training for triathlons in the future. So come on out to Hanson Dam at 7:00 AM to help us out, also at 8:30 under the freeway overpass on Van Nuys Boulevard that is the border literally between my council district and Councilmember Tony Cardenas's district. The Van Nuys Boulevard underneath the 5 freeway, we have that mural painting project, Tony, that you've been supportive of as well, working with men in the neighborhood. So great things going on, come get involved.
Ms. Han.
I just wanted to make an announcement. I think it's important, and I wanted to use this as an opportunity to thank my council members for standing with me two years ago when I challenged our port complex to begin moving our cargo off-peak hours. And Tony and I shepherded that through our Commerce Committee, and I just think it was something people told us we could never do, that there was too many people involved that would never happen. And you stood with me, you supported me. And as of this week, we are now moving 30% of the cargo that comes into the Port of Los Angeles and Long Beach in the middle of the night and on the weekends. And what that means to all of us is just this last week, from August 1st to August 4th, that means 118,000 trucks are not on the freeways during commute time. So I sometimes wonder if what we do actually makes a difference, but I think what we did on that standing firm and pushing our port to be a leader in that effort is now- I thought the traffic was lighter this morning. I don't know if it is because of the off-peak hours, but we have reached a goal there that they were targeting for their first year in operation. We reached it in one month. So when we work hard, when we push people, things can change for the betterment of all those who are driving on our streets. It's reduced traffic, it's reduced pollution, and it's moved efficiently in Los Angeles. I thought that was a good announcement for all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Cardenas as well to say a few words.
On that note, I think Ms. Han is downplaying her efforts and success on that. When she says that people thought it couldn't be done, she's not kidding. We're talking about major union labor issues. We're talking about truck drivers, trucking companies. We're talking about some of the biggest international businesses in the world who are saying, might be a good idea or a bad idea, but I don't want to have any part of it, any part of it. This was an impossibility, almost. And Ms. Han shepherded that as a representative of that community with the help of then-mayor Han, with the help of the commission, appointed commission to the harbor, and many, many constituents. They actually had meetings where they had over 60 different representatives of 60 different interests, not only at one meeting, but at many, many, many meetings. So that just goes to show to the leadership of Ms. Han, and I can't say enough, even I'm understating how important it is and how much leadership Ms. Han showed in that effort beyond just incredible odds. It truly was described as an impossibility, and Ms. Han said, no, we have to do it not only for the port, not only for the constituents, but for the entire region of this United States. So thank you, Ms. Han, for showing that leadership and gaining that support and pulling all of them together to make sure that something that people said was impossible actually is happening. That's a true feat on your behalf as an elected official and as a human being. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Janice. Any other announcements, Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Smith?
Just an announcement on August 14, 12 noon to 7:00 PM. There will be a World Stage Jazz Festival in the 43rd and Degnan and Limerick Park. Also, the weekly Limerick Park Farmers Market between 10 and 2, it's Sunday. And finally, the African Marketplace starts, their 20th year commences August 20 through Labor Day. Their main gala will be on August the 19th at the Rose Garden at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith?
Yes, in addition to what we celebrate with Korean Day, also tomorrow is Indian Independence Day. And out in San Fernando Valley, we have a very large Indian population will be celebrating at Cal State Northridge from 3 till about 11:00, 12:00. Indians, they like to dance, they can go on all night long. So this is the subcontinent Indians, not the American Indians, celebrating their Independence Day, and it's open to public, and it's free. Lots of good eats, lots of good curry, lots of great dancing, and it's open to the public. Please come on out.
It's a great event, Mr. Smith. We were both there last year, and it was incredible in attendance. Mr. Reyes.
I just think, Madam President, I just want to thank my colleagues for joining me at Hall of Reverend Committee over at the Goodwill. We had the state rail authority present their project. And with the support of Councilmember Jan Perry, Mayor Garcey, who had the community there at that Hall of Reverend Committee, and again, I want to thank them, the state authority for coming out and supporting us in this very important issue.
Thank you, Ms. Perry and Ms. Padilla.
Ever the heart and soul of the city of Los Angeles, Tom Labange. Ask me, and we're jointly announcing and reminding the entire city of Los Angeles, Nise Week Parade will be this Sunday, starting at 3rd and Central in front of the Centenary Church. So please join us. It's always an incredible event. It's beautiful. We'll be dancing in the streets.
Mr. Padilla.
Colleagues, not so much of an announcement, but I think it bears mentioning, Mr. Reyes, there's two routes that are taken to work every day. I'm either driving by the Taylor Yards or by the cornfields. And there's a tremendous amount of activity going on in both of those sites, utilizing city resources, state resources, and bringing about new parks in urban areas. The grass is turning green at Taylor Yards, and it looks wonderful. So just wanted to take a moment to congratulate you on your hard work there.
Congratulations. Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you. I follow Mr. Padilla too on the cornfields. If you get a treat, just drive up North Spring to watch them grow. It's about a foot high right now, Ed? A foot high, and inch by inch, row by row, I'm going to watch the corn grow. So that's good. Mr. Garcetti, I was in your district this morning at 61, 21 Sunset Boulevard. What was it, 61, 21 Sunset Boulevard? Five seconds. Columbia Square, and I was at Columbia Square, and I was able to get a golden mic just as a piece of memorabilia for 68 years. They broadcast there. And the great thing about KNX and CBS Radio, there's so much history in that building, Columbia Square, Columbia Records is also in there. I believe the mothers and fathers have recorded California Dreamin', as well as Good Vibrations, I believe by the Beach Boys, among many things, Jack Benny, Bob Hope, and all those things. And it was just great history up there. In a little less than 11 hours, they will close the station there at 61, 21 Sunset and to sign off, and they'll be moving down to the Miracle Mile. So I just also want to salute to the great Alex Sullivan who for many years, now retired, covered City Hall for them. And one thing, one thing about KNX is their voices, a dear friend of mine, somebody who knew, Charlie Turner, who was the honorary mayor of Griffith Park before Louis Alvarado, when he was in Canada, as a young man in his 30s, he could hear KNX's clear signal channel all the way up in Canada some nights. So it was amazing, powerful radio station. Now they're going to be more powerful on the Miracle Mile in their new high-tech radio station. Good luck, KNX.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. I have a brief announcement. In my district, this weekend is the 44th Annual Watermelon Festival, sponsored by the Lions Club at Sunland Park. This evening, we have the crowning of the Watermelon Queen, and also on Saturday and Sunday from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, there's wonderful rides and cultural of Salento Hanga. So we encourage everyone to come out to our wonderful community. Colleagues, do we have any adjourning motions today? Yes, we have adjourning motions, if we could ask everyone to please stand.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn our meeting today in memory of Lily Camarillo, a Wilmington resident who died on August 5. Lily was a fighter for justice, and although she's been wheelchair-bound for years, she still founded in her to fight. She was always trying to rid Wilmington of gangs, drugs, and violence, and she worked very closely with LAPD to clean up East Wilmington, which was known for years as Ghost Town, and she organized community cleanup, participated in graffiti paintouts with Gap, and she just could always be counted on to help her neighbors, to stand up for Wilmington, really up until her last day. So we will greatly miss Lily, and what she did will be a lasting legacy for the difference that one person can make in a community. And funeral services are scheduled for Saturday, tomorrow at 1:00 PM at Alsos Cemetery in Long Beach.
Thank you, Ms. Han, Mr. Garcetti.
I just wanted to say something briefly that I know we already adjourned in memory of David Shaw, but the memorial service will be at Stephen Weiss Temple this Sunday at 5:00 PM for folks, that's 15,000, Stephen S. Weiss Drive, for folks who would like to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of April Z. De Armas. She worked as a paralegal in the city attorney's office, enabled prosecutor program for Central Bureau from March 2002 until her attorney leave in July 2005. This is a bureau that has incredible work, enabled prosecutor for many of the communities in our city. She died from complications of childbirth. The city mourned her loss. Visitation at Forest Lawn Covina Hills tonight at 5:00 PM, followed by a vigil at 8:00 PM. In due diligence, the family requests a monetary donation to Rod Darmas. She is survived by Rod Darmas, two-week-old daughter Isabella Ariele, parents, and two sisters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. As the council adjourned, the name of Christopher Santangelo. Chris was the son of a very dear friend of mine and my father's business partner, Stephen Santangelo, who got me involved in politics, actually, when he ran for Congress when I was a young boy. I had the pleasure of being the babysitter for Chris Santangelo and his sister Carolyn when I was in high school, and they were my younger friends and my father's good friends, Santangelo family. He died at the age of 49 of liver cancer. He went on to college. He was a good pro athlete. He became a professional golfer, traveled the world, never quite made it to that final echelon of the great winners, but went on, became a pro in Hawaii and near California, and he died at the unfortunate age of 49. So on behalf of the Smith family and Santangelo family, Christopher Santangelo.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.